All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name is Bill Chiravanti. I'm the CEO of the Orange County IDA. And we are here for the public hearing from Mack Brothers, otherwise known as Milmar Boots. Thank you all for being here again. Let me just make a couple introductions and then we'll get to the pledge and the rest of our agenda. Again, my name is Bill Chiravanti, Director of the IDA. I have Marty Boras from the IDA as well. Francis Roth is our photographer for today. The applicant, representing the applicant is Mr. Rory McInnes from Milmar/Mack Brothers. Mr. David Higgins is an engineering consultant. And Mr. John Capello is legal representation. So they may contribute to a small portion of the presentation. I reckon I have a lengthy presentation. Just want to make sure everyone understands the project, the scope of it, what's being considered for incentives. And then when I run through a few things, I will open up to public comment. Just to make the announcement one more time, I believe everyone did sign in, but if you do want to sign in, or if you do want to speak, please sign with the pad there. And I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. By my right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Before I get into this matter, I think a little more common practice for us, we're at the Orange County IDA, we're trying to do a much better job of helping to educate the public about exactly what we do, make sure, because there's a lot of any misunderstanding about exactly the role of the IDA and the types of incentives that we offer. So I just want to go through a couple of things. First of all, and these details will be in the public hearing notice that was put out several weeks ago, but first of all, this applicant is looking for what I like to call the three-legged stool of IDA benefits. This is basically all we offer. The IDA itself, we have the sister agency, the Orange County Funding Corporation, through which we can offer issue tax-exempt revenue bonds and such. But with the IDA, there are three possible benefits. Sales tax exemption, that's for building materials, for equipment, for furniture, fixtures for a project. Of course, in Orange County, we have an 8.125% sales tax. They can be exempted from that during, for the scope of their project. The second is mortgage recording tax exemption. On a commercial mortgage for a project such as this one, there is a tax of 1.05% on the principal of the mortgage that's being taken. We can exempt that as well. The third benefit, again, the third leg of this stool, is a, what's commonly known as a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, or property tax abatement. And the term abatement really just means phase in. It is in lieu of taxes, meaning rather than this project being assessed like our homes are every year, or what's it worth, what are the taxes going to be? And that could deviate every single year. This provides certainty, predictability, and a clear payment schedule for the applicant if approved, of course. The idea of a phase in, I want to be clear that taxes never go down, they only go up. We don't write anyone checks, we don't provide any grants, nothing like that. It's just savings on taxes for the investment of this project. The property tax abatement for the most part usually starts where whatever the, in the case of land, raw land and construction projects being built from the ground up there, the tax usually is whatever that land is generating taxes right now. And they will go up over the term of the pilot. In this case, because it's a manufacturer, per our tax-exempt policy, we are, the applicant can apply for a 15-year pilot. So over the course of 15 years, the taxes will go from what they are now to what they'll be full boat. And I'll give you that number in a moment. And they go up usually gradually, typically in a straight line, that type of progression there. Just to clarify a couple other misunderstandings, these are all new, what I'll call incremental taxes that will result from this project. If this project doesn't happen, those taxes don't materialize. Because we're giving them a savings or a phase into those property taxes, no other resident, constituent, business shoulders the remainder of the taxes. There's no such thing. They're just, there are less that are being charged to this applicant over that period. Again, there's no remainder to be made up by any other taxpayer in the town or other ones. Special districts, so fire, ambulance, police, those are, there are special districts that taxpayers pay into to fund those services with a pilot, or again, a property tax abatement, or any of these other benefits, the applicant cannot avoid any of those special district payments ever. So those will be paid in full from the get-go always. The new incremental special district taxes will be covered. And then the last piece I'd like to point out is, sometimes I think it's, it can be confusing, it can be, it can give, I think, a challenging perspective of the fact that projects that come to the IDA also go usually through the planning board approval process. And they're doing that simultaneously. Sometimes they're completing the planning board process before they even come to us. And that is for a reason. IDAs are not allowed to award benefits, incentives to any sort of project until that project has a determination through the secret process. Those that most, I think, people here understand, know what that acronym is, that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act, New York State's very stringent environmental impact assessment process and environmental review and approval. The New York State General Municipal Law requires that an applicant go through the secret process and get a determination as to positive or negative. You'll hear about positive, it's determined it will have an environmental impact, negative it does not. Either way, they need to get a determination before the IDA can award benefits. The challenge with that, what I consider kind of a catch-22, if I can use that term, is that it appears often to the public and to all of us, well, they're going through the approval process, they must be, they're going to do this anyway, they don't need any sort of incentive. I understand that perspective, that perception, but again, the fact is that they cannot even have IDA benefits unless they go through that process. So that was just one of the other things I wanted to clarify. Next, I'd like to read the notice of public hearing. This was put out in the newspaper, put on our website, and a few other venues in order to make sure the public is aware of this. And it is wordy, but please allow me to read it in full. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article 18A of the New York General Municipal Law will be held by the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, the agency, on November 17, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. local time, at the Town of Ocean Town Hall, 41 Webster Avenue, New Ocean, New York, in connection with the following matter. Mack Brothers Limited, a New York corporation for itself or on behalf of an entity to be formed, collectively to be known as the company herein, requested the agency undertake a project, known as the project, consisting of: A1: the acquisition of a leasehold interest in approximately 60 acres of improved real property located at 161 Station Road, Taxback Number 12-1-13.2; and 2564 State Route 17M, Tax Map Number 12-1-13.1; Ocean, New York, collectively to be known as the land herein; 2: the demolition of approximately 5,000 square feet of the existing approximately 60,000 square foot building, known as the building; used as a frozen food manufacturing facility; and the construction of an approximately 40,000 square foot addition to be, to the building to provide for, among other things, a new loading dock, refrigerated refuse area, freezer space, processing area, two manufacturing areas and office space; and the renovation of certain portions of the existing building, including, but not limited to, the packaging, processing, storage, and freezing areas collectively with the building, known as the facility; 3: the acquisition and installation in and on the facility of furniture, fixtures, and equipment, collectively the equipment, and together with the land in the facility known as, quote, "the project facility"; 4: the granting of certain financial assistance in the form of exemptions from state and local sales and use tax, mortgage reporting tax, and real property tax, collectively the financial assistance; 5: the appointment of the company or its designee as an agent of the agency, the IDA, in connection with the acquisition, construction, equipping, and completion of the project facility; and 6: the acquisition of an interest in the land and facility by the agency pursuant to a lease agreement, and the acquisition of an interest in the equipment pursuant to a bill of sale from the company to the agency; the sublease of the project facility back to the company pursuant to a lease-back agreement. The company will be the initial owner or operator of the project. The agency will, at the above stated time, hear all persons with views with respect to the proposed financial assistance to the company, the proposed owner/operator, the location of the project facility, and the nature of the project. So those are what comments should be about, this project as it pertains to potential financial incentives from the IDA. A copy of the application filed by the company with the agency with respect to the project, including an analysis of the costs and benefits of the project, are available for public inspection during the business hours at the office of the agency located at 4 Crotty Lane, Suite 100, New Windsor, New York, 12553, or on its website at https://ocnyida.com. I'd like to underscore those facts. For those that don't know, our office is currently located at the Stewart Airport Campus. 4 Crotty Lane is basically at the top of the hill, at the top of the campus. But our website is designed and constantly improved to be ever-transparent for everything that we do, everything, project comes before us, every detail is posted on that website. Again, that's www.ocnida.com. You go to the homepage, right away, first of all, you'll see an opportunity, a link for the live stream of this event, of this, of any of our public meet, all of our meetings are public, by the way. You can, you can access the live stream from that, from the homepage. And then you can also go to the active project section. It's a menu at the top, active projects, and you can look at any project that is not only currently being considered by the IDA, but any that is under, is the term of their incentive is still active. If somebody got a 15-year pilot 14 years ago, the information for that project would be on our website until the 15-year term runs out. And if you want information on the past project that is not considered active and on our website, we will give you any piece of information, you or anyone who would like the transparency of the name of the game of the IDA. So I wanted to be clear about that. Just a couple other things. The IDA for projects like this, that our Board of Directors is considering, we always do a cost-benefit analysis. So, and using a tool that's a proven tool used in the industry. This is actually a new version that we purchased last year from a group called MRB Group. They specialize in this type of work. Basically, what we do is we enter all of the project information, construction jobs, budgets, what the taxes on the land would be without the project, what the taxes would be with the project, without the incentive, and every detail of the pilot, again, the abatement schedule, everything is included there. And basically, in the end, it spits out what it considers to be various values. First of all, the sales tax exemption being requested by Mack Brothers/Milmar, the value that they estimate based upon their budget, again, building materials, furniture fixtures, equipment, et cetera, that total projected sales tax exemption is $487,500. The mortgage recording tax, again, the 1.05% off the principal of the mortgage, that's $75,000. And the pilot, over the course of a 15-year pilot, which again, is what the IDA currently makes available for application for manufacturers, over the entire course of the 15-year pilot, the applicant would pay, makes payments, even though they're getting tax break, they will be making that incremental tax payment during the whole term. And those payments total projected to be $3,972,054.46. Again, just shy of $4 million. I want to be clear, this is just on the expansion that Milmar/Mack Brothers is doing, not on the existing facility. None of those taxes change, they never go down. When a pilot expires, the taxes can never go down again, or be exempted or abated ever again. So they will be paying a total of almost $4 million in payments. There will be a savings over that term, however, of $2,246,324.96. So the total value of incentives that this applicant, if approved, would benefit from, So certainly considerable incentives in order to create, they're projecting 50 jobs is what they're committing to over the course of the next three years. And quite frankly, that adding to our property tax base here in the Town of Ocean, and further supporting and enabling the growth of a quality employer here in town, that's the intention, that's the reason we even give a decent incentive. But again, there are certainly values to that. I believe I mentioned this early, but I'm not sure if everyone else is in the building, but there's a copy right here up front if you want to come up for the cost-benefit analysis, as well as the pilot schedule, which really just says year by year over the 15 years, what the applicant would be paying if this pilot, among the other benefits, is approved. One other thing I'll point out, in year 16, when this pilot expires, the taxes are due to be $483,948. So the taxes from that point, at year 16, it will be that, and only going up from there, unless Mr. Vetra decides to somehow lower the taxes for the municipality. But taxes generally go up as a rule, of course. So that's the case. And I'll also add special districts. Over the course of the pilot, again, they'll pay special district taxes in full, they'll be contributing $216,216.89 to those special district funds. So last piece. Again, to the cost-benefit analysis now, the total cost of the incentives, $3,025,42. Local benefits, a value of $77,791,300, these are benefits to us based upon the jobs, construction, permanent taxes being paid, et cetera. Total benefits to the state and region, $81,700, I'm sorry, $81,713,063. So a roughly $82 million projected economic impact as a result of this project. And that impact is just during the term of the pilot. They will be generally creating values through jobs for years to come, in property taxes paid, but just during the period of the pilot, again, the value, the benefit to the state and to the local municipality is $81,713,000. Lastly, we do a benefit-to-cost ratio, so you know based upon what it's costing us, again, what we're, the incentives that are, that would be given if approved versus the actual benefit, the economic impact benefit. Locally, with a benefit of just under $67 million to us, and a cost of $2,429 million, that locally, the benefit-to-cost ratio is 28 to 1. So the, we project an economic impact and benefit to the local area of 28 times the value of the incentive. The state, however, it's a lower amount, less value to the state, and they're giving up more sales tax exemption. The benefit to the state is $3,379,707, at a cost of, pardon me, $310,000. The benefit-to-cost ratio statewide is 11 to 1. So the value of the incentive, 11 times the value of the incentive is what will be the benefit locally here. So we're going to get to public comment in a moment. The only other thing I'd like to add is the fact that this is not, this is a public hearing, this is not a back-and-forth. I want to give all full respect and time to the people that come up and make their comments, but if you have a question or a comment that maybe is deserving of a response, we'll say, I will write those down, and we'll save all of those till the end, and I may ask the applicant to respond to a question or comment. I may not, but I may based upon what we hear. Make sure we've covered everything else. And I already know, Frank, I'm talking too quickly for you, but we have a recording for you if needed. You and I go way back, this has been a long-standing problem, I have not fixed. But we're keeping things moving. Yes, with all that said, I'm going to grab this, if I can reach you. And our first two, first two gentlemen, we will actually hear from the applicant. So I don't know who would like to speak first, and we don't need a long presentation, but I want to make sure people understand the project itself, the scope, the scale, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Capello, let you start.
Good evening, everybody. Good afternoon, everyone. We count Capello as a real set, as you probably know. And here, it happens, the applicant to present, we believe is an exciting opportunity for the Town of Ocean, and we count it in Orange and State of New York. This is, I also have here with me, Dave Higgins, the engineer, who I will turn this over to very quickly, because he will explain exactly what the project is, and involved, day one. And Rory McInnes, who is with Mack Brothers, and Milmar Boots, who is here to discuss the history of this company. It's been a long time, Ocean has been providing jobs in Ocean, and is looking to seeking to upgrade and expand their operations to improve and upgrade the facilities, make them more competitive, and also provide, as Bill says, approximately 15 jobs to the area of people who are coming, will stay in the area, will be part of the community, and help make Ocean in our area more diverse community. The benefits that will receive will help offset the costs, really make this project go. I don't have to tell anybody, you know, in this boom, it's been happening with inflation, with interest rates, and alongs with COVID and the loss, and to upgrade your workforce, all of those have to increase the cost enormously on any project. So these IDA benefits will help offset those costs, and it also helps, I believe, the purpose that to stick a form of an IDA, to make our state, one, more competitive, two, allow people who are investing in our state to have some opportunity when they're initially taking the construction loan and doing the buildup, to catch up, to get fully operating, with those employees fully there, to get their operations fully functional, you know, start operating like that, the day we make improvements, the pro-rating of, and the abatements of taxes and some of the fees over time will allow them to pay more as they begin operation, as they get their feet on the ground and begin operating, which that is an important purpose of the IDA. And the third, and it can't be understated enough, this project, because it will receive IDA benefits, if it does, will be required to use local labor. So instead of people coming from Tennessee, who will come and have no commitment to the community, come here, do cheap labor, build in and leave, you will be helping promote and provide more jobs and benefits for your local labor force to help build it, keep those business, and keep that money in our community. The money they made building this, they will likely spend in our community, which is one of the benefits Bill said. And they will also be paid the New York wages versus Tennessee wages. So I think all of that adds up to allow a really great upgrade to the facility, to provide people, to provide more diversity to our community, to provide the types of jobs we need. I would say that these are for management jobs, manufacturing jobs, this is not a warehouse. Someone who goes around this area a lot, that we're just, this is manufacturing, this type of development. I hear every day people say, this is the type of development, beginning the area, if someone who has made a commitment to this community already, who will be able to continue to do it hopefully for another generation and do it as a manager. So with that, I'm going to have to briefly kind of go through the logistics of the action.
Thank you. And if I could, Mr. Higgins, just before you start, I want to just touch on a couple things that Mr. Capello said. First of all, local labor, like local construction labor, the Orange County IDA has had since 2016 a local labor policy that requires that if you get incentives, any incentives from the IDA, that 85% of your construction labor needs to be from the local work shed, as we call it. It's not locally, meaning just Orange County. We frankly could not possibly provide enough workers just in Orange County. The local work shed really is defined as the seven county region, basically from here, Sullivan County, Olson County, all the way down to Westchester. So those counties. And the second piece, I want to make sure people understand, is there's a new law that was passed by New York State and in effect as of January 1st, 2022, for prevailing wage, that any project, construction, commercial construction project that is over a $5 million budget, construction budget, land acquisition and such, is over $5 million. And if more than 30% of the budget for the project comes from public sources, IDA benefits, state grants, whatever it might be, then that construction project must be built by prevailing wage. So the labors that are onsite must make prevailing wage, not necessarily union, but union certainly prevailing wage, but it must be prevailing wage. That is in effect on this project from what we see as a plan. Just want to be clear on that. Sorry, Mr. Higgins.
The afternoon, Dave Higgins from Lincoln, Salt Lake City, New Jersey. We've been working with Milmar and Spire for many, many months, and also have been in the planning work many times to progress this plan through their approval process. I'm just to give a brief rundown of the project. This is a tax lot, 12-1-13.2, it's approximately 18.7 acres. It's located on the north side of New York State Route 17M, and on the west side, 611 Station Road, property is known as 161 Station Road, Ocean. It is in the town's ORI district, in the Steel District, which is a commercial office and use district, and the food processing uses permitted, the special use permitted by the planning. This map that we have here represents the existing additions for the site, an aerial overview, and, let's take the clips off here, the, this shows the existing facilities. Basically, right now, they total is 61,100 square feet. They are in need of some renovation, certain expansions to meet Milmar's needs as they be approved progressive in the future with expanded program, and to meet the standards for all the food processing requirements and about that. They do have access off 611 Station Road, with right now, free means of access, some parking areas up front. A bit right now, it's in various states and conditions, some of the areas need to be renovated. And so we have a plan here. So this is an overview of the additions I've added and we have for the planning board. And basically, the, just to highlight some of the building additions that are proposed, is a 27,762 square foot freezer, which is located on the west side of the site. Currently, Milmar uses an off-site freezer, believe it's actually in New Jersey. They wanted to bring the freezer space here and basically avoid, you know, truck trips from up here to the off-site facility in New Jersey and Paton Field. There's also a 9,110 square foot production room, which is located on the south side of the building. And then some other facilities, a 1,276 square foot tri-storage room, a 1,276 square foot dock office. In this area where this is existing barn right now that is going to be demolished, they're putting a 2,251 square foot test kitchen, two chef offices, and then there's some other various facilities on the back, there's a packaging room, a, you know, a trash refuse room, and then some miscellaneous corridors, whatnot, that connect all these rooms. Up front, the planning board has us basically looking to improve the aesthetics of the site from 611 Station Road and 17M. So we have a, some landscaping improvements, we're going to be abandoning one of the entrances, you know, we just have truck entrance in the back and parking area up front, one of those entrances being removed. And we are providing some additional parking around the facility, around back end. Right now, the current site has about 95 parking spaces. With the improvements up here and the additional parking around the back of the building, we're going to increase that to 162 parking spaces. Here's improved accessibility around the building, basically would be paving, replacing the gravel drive with pavement, and basically improved circulation around the building, which is important for emergency vehicle access. There will be an underground storage facility, a water and fire protection service. They have a size of 30,000 gallon underground storage tank. There are also some landscaping improvements on the property, the facility, and that is also, again, you know, something that's kind of what is different for. There are several other permits and improvements that we do need to attain in addition to the site plan and special use permit that we need to maintain for the planning board. There's a nationwide permit from some wetlands disturbance from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that's under a tenth of an acre, that qualifies as a nationwide permit with the Army Corps. We will also need to get a permit from the New York State D E C for stormwater speedies. And the project is referred to the Orange County Department of Planning under the GML 239M regulation. With regards to the State Environmental Qualifier, we do have the planning board acting as the agency, and they agreed to the negative declaration on July 21st, 2002. We're right now in the process of finalizing tight plan approval and special use permit approval with the planning board. They have a resolution, conditional approval prepared, we're just going through this last meeting, so we believe that we'll have that closed out with the planning board probably in the next one to two months. So with that, I'll hand the presentation over to Rory McInnes, Milmar, to provide some additional information.
Very good. Thanks, sir. McInnes.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you very much to the board. Thank you. Inflation, very well said. Costs, wages, everything is going up so quickly, and we want to grow. We want to stay here. We want to grow. We have 240 people. We'd like to bring the other 50 people in. We'd like to get out of New Jersey. We'd like to bring everything out to our own property. We have 60 acres, but we're only using 18 acre parcel. Again, we can bring the people in a lot quicker with your help, and we greatly appreciate it. And the business, we've been here since 1989, and we're looking to grow. Just thank you.
Can you tell us how many current employees you have right now?
240.
I think a lot of people don't realize that. It's kind of tucked away there. Not everyone realizes, and I think what a employee you are now. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mackin. Thanks very much. Okay, without further ado, I'm going to open it up for public comment. We'll start right with County Legislature Michael Agnacnus Dohkas. Oh, right here, please. Do it, sir.
In the front?
Oh, right in the front, sure. Just for those chairs.
Thank you for having me here. First of all, thank you, board member, for having me here. And as you know, I'm Orange County Legislature Mike Agnacnus Dohkas, but I'm also senior advisor to Senator James Scoopis, and I want to make it clear, I'm representing him today here. Anyone that knows me knows that anytime I speak, it's off the cuff. I never have anything written down, but this time I will read exactly what the words and the sentiments of Senator are, so I have no misunderstandings at all. Very good. So Senator Scoopis strongly opposes, is opposed to the payment in lieu of taxes for the Mac Brothers project. Besides the fact that Mac Brothers' application cites a 1% estimate of sales within Orange County, a 60 million projection of income within their first three years of operation, and that Mac Brothers is already getting 7.2 million USDA and ESD grants for this project, the simple matter of fact is that the applicant concedes on their application that they would, in fact, move forward with this project regardless of if they received an IDA incentive or not. Nothing more needs to be considered. IDA benefits, when applied properly, which this IDA regularly do not do, abide by the but-for clause of economic development. But for this incentive, the project would not happen. The fact that definite no has not already been communicated to the applicant by the IDA staff is alarming, but unsurprising given the agency's history of this regarding taxpayers. If the IDA approves a 15-year pilot, or any pilot at all, for a project and jobs that are unquestionably going to move forward regardless of an incentive that would, that would be more of the same: borderline criminality and shameless grass coming out of this IDA. We look forward to the new jobs Mac Brothers will create and to their continued operation in Goshen. Our office, the senator's office, remains a partner to all local businesses, and we look forward to the future success and endeavors here in Orange County so long as it is not needless and on the backs of property taxpayers. And then as Scoopis urges the Orange County IDA to reject, to reject the pilot, and finally do the right thing for the taxpayers of Orange County. Thank you for your time. May I hand this in for the legislature. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next would be Legislature James O'Donnell, County Legislature again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir, for since 89, coming to Goshen, coming to Orange County, in spite of society that New York State ranks 49 out of 50 in zoning business. The reason we have IDAs is because of that fact. If the Senate, the Assembly, and the Government's office would pick that, then perhaps we wouldn't need IDAs. This is the second time I've heard Senator Scoopis say borderline criminality. I don't know exactly what that means, borderline, but in case you've done anything criminal, my background is the state police, and in five years is the chief of police of the MTA. If he's got anything criminality-wise, please bring it forward forth with. As you know, I was the leader of recovering $1.3 billion of the IDA, the passport. I want to congratulate the current board and you as doing the right thing, stepping up and serving the public again. And for you, sir, bringing 50 more jobs to the county of ours, we should be congratulated on it. And also for hiring local companies to help you get this, to successfully continue your business that has been a cornerstone of our community since 89. Again, hey, Senator Scoopis is a hardworking guy. He's in charge of investigations though, all right? He has the subpoena power. He has a lot of influence in all of it. I wish he would have went after the previous IDA board as much as he talks about borderline criminality, which is just ridiculous as far as putting a stain on the good people that sit on the board now and yourself. I find that borderline criminal, all right? I do find it disgraceful. So if he's got anything, put it on his table. Okay, sir? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Next, Zach Conquintin.
Thank you, Bill. It's good to see you. Thank you for your transparency, you know, in putting together this meeting. I was just glad I was able to make it. I will be brief. I do want to echo Senator Scoopis's, you know, calls here to reject this pilot. You know, I think that there's a couple of concerns that come to mind. I'm here today as a resident of this community. You know, what comes to mind after hearing some of the speakers that went before me here is that the people who really invest in our state, in our community, year after year, month after month, are the taxpaying residents of Goshen. I've heard inflation mentioned. Inflation is a factor, and those folks, those taxpaying residents, deserve a break for those very same reasons. And even though Milmar would necessarily be getting a tax cut that would raise the taxes of local residents, it is local residents' tax payments that won't be offset by the contributions of a larger business if they pay their fair share, like all of us do. And, you know, that's why I'm particularly concerned about this project. They're getting assistance already, many other ways, assistance that smaller and medium-sized businesses don't often have access to. And on that point, you know, there are far too many small and medium sizes, it even sound right here in Goshen, that do have a barrier to entry as far as doing things that they want to do with their project. And that's why the disregard for the but-for clause in this particular project is really troubling to me. That is something that this body is held to specifically to make sure that we are attracting the types of businesses that we otherwise would not have. I do thank you for everything you've done for the community of Goshen, for being a part of our community for so many years, but you're here. And there are several other projects that potentially could be here, that we could be working very hard to attract to make sure that they do come here and stay here if they were given the incentives that they need. So while this board is going out of their way to provide transparency now and put information on the website and share these details with residents, the residents of this community would benefit so greatly from more ratables, from a business of this size coming on the tax rolls, paying their fair share, and being held to the same standards as everybody else. The pilot is simply too large for far too many years for it to really benefit the community as a whole, when they would benefit so much more if this business, still going to be here, paid their fair share. So I do want to echo the claims of Senator Scoopis, he thinks the pilot should be rejected.
Thank you, Mr. Conquintin. And lastly, Katie Lancelotti.
I guess you keep it up. Okay. So thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. As Bill said, I'm Katie Lancelotti. I represent the Orange County Partnership. I am here today to express our unwavering support of the project. The local family-owned business is expanding and continuing to contribute to the town of Goshen, a company which is in an industry that we are constantly trying to attract and trying to keep here, is desiring to stay here in Orange County, and not only stay here, but continue to thrive here, which they have done since the late 80s. So I just wanted to be brief and just say that we continue to support their continued growth and their request for incentives to keep them here and to expand with their workforce base.
Thanks very much, Katie. I have no other, other folks signed up for the speech, so unless I hear anything else, I just wanted to clarify something for the record that the applicant said, I didn't just comment that while they're here already, it has stated that it may be many years from now that they may be able to do this expansion and upgrade. So to punish someone who's made a commitment to the area, tries to attract something outside and new, really makes no sense if we want to help those who invested in our community. I know from a legal perspective, I've always been taught in marketing, your best marketing is people, your clients who already know the words you do, instead of looking outside and trying to do this. This is someone you know, who's already made a commitment here, who's telling you and told you on the record and dishonest with you to say, yes, we may not, we may do it, but we're not going to do it for several years because we will not be able to do it. And therefore, those jobs that are in Jersey will stay in Jersey and not come to New York. And then the other thing I really think is important to note, because I've represented a number of developers in this region who have been faced with the situation, who have been faced with opposition, and what many have been done, and isn't it worth to say, well, I can get the 485D tax concession, which is still going to abate my taxes, which is very self-emotional. And how am I going to make up the difference? I'm going to go hire those people in Tennessee or Pennsylvania, and who are going to work with much cheaper labor. They're going to take their checks when they take their checks. They're going to go back to Tennessee, back to Pennsylvania. They're going to shop. They're going to eat in restaurants in Tennessee and Pennsylvania. They're going to educate their kids in Tennessee and Pennsylvania. They're going to pay for karate instruction, dance instruction for their children in Tennessee and Pennsylvania. While the workers in IDA projects who use local labors, that money will go here, and it will help union workers, it will help labor, and it will help our workforce. So the argument I'm hearing almost is, no, forget about New York. Let's use outside labor, build it cheaper, because, and that's not benefiting your taxpayers at the end. It's harder, but I have seen it. I've seen it in action, and that's what happens. And I'm not saying you know, I'm just going to do it. They did it, want to use local labor. This is what you're facing, and this is the purpose of the IDA, is to keep those jobs in New York and to keep employing New Yorkers instead of working outside. I appreciate it, John. I will underscore a couple of your points. First of all, that to the but-for clause, the applicant, to be clear, the public, everyone in attendance, the applicant did respond saying that they would expect that if they didn't get the incentive, they would hope to continue with the project, but as John is outlining, it wouldn't be for several years. So the IDA, if they were to approve incentives, the motivation frankly would be to realize those jobs and the multiplier effect that Mr. Capello is talking about, that the idea that 75% of one's earnings are spent locally, to be able to realize those, as well as adding the incremental tax, property taxes, they will be paying throughout the term of the pilot. And then again, it's full boat, so to speak, going forward. That's the only reason the IDA would consider those benefits, even if they're saying the project would, if they would contemplate it going forward. And just to, again, touch on what Mr. Capello said about the 45B. So for anyone in attendance or in the public that's tuning in that is not aware, 45B is, I like to describe it simply as a half a pilot, essentially, and it's as of right, meaning that any commercial construction project in New York State has a right to apply for 45B. And by the way, it's not much of an application process. You typically go to the municipal clerk, the town clerk, let's say, fill out a form, and that's it. It is as of right, again, in New York, and how it works is typically you, an applicant, if they get a 45B, they would start paying taxes at 50% of the ultimately new tax rate. They start at 50%, and those taxes will increase 5% a year over 10 years until they get into that full boat again. So however, it's as of right, and there are no restrictions, no strings attached, so to speak, unlike IDA benefits where, again, we have our local labor policy, so you would have to use 85% local labor. Again, with 45B, they're free to do whatever they like. Also, the prevailing wage law applies because if the incentive hits the scale in terms of triggering the requirement for local construction labor, labors to be paid by prevailing wage. So I think it's important to point those out. I'm glad that you did clarify that, Mr. Capello, and that. Those are the types of factors that I think motivate the IDA board to consider these. So I'll just open it up one more time. The floor, if anyone wants to make additional comments or anyone else. Mr. Petro, if you wanted to say anything, please. Mr. Supervisor?
Since the Goshen residents are paying for this IDA, can you tell me how many employees of 230 live in Goshen?
Of course, I know the answer, right?
Honestly, I'd look it up for you.
Yeah, and would you be willing to guarantee that at least 25 of those 50 jobs become Goshen residents?
Would be more than that. We're, I've been part of the area for 30 years. I think that this is the hardest hiring time I've ever seen. We're doing everything to find as many people as possible. And as they leave, we try to hire folks. It's our goal.
So can you take it directly to go, you guarantee at least 25 of these jobs become Goshen residents, if they fly?
I was going to say, if they fly. You can't guarantee that they fly, so preferential.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Any other comments? Hearing none. At 4:53, we will close the public hearing for Mac Brothers, Milmar. And again, I want to reiterate to the public that may be listening in or watching this to a later time, or anyone here, if you have other questions, you want to discuss this, you want to debate it a little bit, you know, kind of on the side, I'm always happy to have those conversations. My contact information is on the website. If someone here wants to get it by cellphone, whatever, I'd be happy to get that out. But we appreciate you being a part of this process. This is what America is all about, this open public process. So we appreciate everyone being here. Thank you, Mr. Mackin and your associates, for providing all that detail. And again, we're going to close the public hearing now, 4:54 PM on November 17th. Thank you all for being here. Have a good day.